We are going to call this meeting to order, and Ms. Lemon will you call the role for us, please?
Director Bentley.
Present.
Director Campos Spitsi.
Present.
Director Mash.
Present.
Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Norwood.
Director Patis.
Present.
Director Sullivan. Five board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. And Director Norwood is excused, he may be joining us for the business meeting. I've not heard from Ms. Sullivan, but we're on to our calendar review and community engagement. So if everybody will take a look at the calendar, just remind you of some school events that we have coming up. Tomorrow, we're at Northridge. This Thursday, the Well Community Foundation Lunch, some of you are probably going to that. And then, on the 1st of November, Election Office Tour. We're visiting Jefferson High School on the 7th.
Jefferson High School, yes.
I think so, we already went to Jefferson.
Mm-hmm.
Marine Corps RTC Ball on the 11th. And...yeah, that gets as much in later November because of a big holiday and a big break. Anything that we're missing?
President Matthews, we do have one more seat for the Community Foundation. If there's any board members who didn't RSVP and you'd still like to go.
I may be able to move that, that one.
Okay.
Headed out of town for the break, but I don't think I'm leaving that early, so I may be able to make it. I'll check with you, Ms. Lemon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Those are all of our community engagement events, and so we are on to the Fulbright Teaching Excellence and Achievement Program. Dr. Pilchard, I will hand it over to you for this presentation.
Thank you, President Matthews, and I'm really pleased to invite Professor Madalyn Lawn and some of the folks from the Fulbright Program, and I apologize, I don't know you, but you'll introduce yourself when you come up, I think. We had originally planned to recognize the Fulbright Scholars tonight in the business meeting, and then I had an opportunity to visit with some of them and hear from some of them during the Greeley-West Diversity Day, and I thought it would really be powerful for you all to have a chance to meet with them directly and hear about what the program is and District 6's role in this. We did have a summary of what Fulbright is in this last weekly bulletin, but I'm sure that Madalyn will also share a little bit. So, Annette, do you have anything you want to share, or should we just bring them on up?
Bring them up.
Yeah, I think we'll just have you come on up, and maybe Dr. Campos Spitsi and I can slide down, and a couple of you can sit over here, and a couple there at the end, so we can get you to a microphone. Whoever's going to share. Come on up.
Do you want to move down here? Oh. Sorry. Come here. Just a second. Mm-hmm. No one's sitting here.
He's right.
Let's leave the chair for, it's, um, Director Sullivan.
Okay, so let's come on over here. Somebody come on over here.
This should, this one. There, okay. And this one?
Yes. Yeah, that's perfect. We don't need those. We are ready, and we're just going to let you take it away. Sure.
My name is Madalyn Millian, and I am a professor at the University of Florida Colorado in the School of Teacher Education, so I have prepared many of your teachers. I at least have been involved in preparing many of your teachers. I am also the co-director of the Fulbright T Program, which we are hosting at UNC. Briefly, what is the, it stands for TEA, so it's a Fulbright Teacher Excellence and Achievement Program. It's a very long title, so we just say TEA. So, the program is funded by the US Department of State and is administered at the Cultural and Educational Affairs Office, and is administered by a nonprofit called IREDS, and they then ask different universities throughout the United States to implement the program. There are six universities implementing similar programs, UNC is one of them. We're very lucky to have the program on our campus. In this year, we have 22 different teachers from 17 countries. This program is targeted to secondary teachers, so we're not in any of your elementary schools because all of the teachers are secondary teachers. And this particular year, we, the emphasis in our program is media literacy. So, what do they do while they're here? They take four classes at UNC. One of it is technology, one of it is media literacy, teaching English as a foreign language, and general principles of education. They also spend 40 hours at District 6 Schools. They're here for six weeks, so it's a six-week program. They complete 40 hours in our schools, in secondary schools, and this year's our partner schools are Greeley-West, Greeley-Central, Brentwood, Frontier Academy High School, Madison-Steem, and Fred Charles School. So those are our six programs, six schools this year. They also attend cultural and social activities. The program also aims at making sure that they go back to their countries with a better understanding of American life and things that are typical in Colorado and in American society, so we have taken, we've been to the Rock and Mountain National Park, different museums, so it's an opportunity for them to also get to know the United States a little bit better. And then also they are paired with an American family, and these are our family friends, and we have a group of really, really strong community members who enjoy meeting people from other countries, and so they invite them to their homes, they take them to different activities in the community, they've been to many football games, so it's also an opportunity for us to contribute to our local community members in terms of getting them exposed to other countries. in terms of getting them exposed to other countries. This year, we have primarily countries from Central, Central Europe, Eastern Europe, and Central Asia. So I'm not going to mention all of the countries, but Azerbaijan, Bosnia, Bulgaria, Czech Republic, Estonia, Hungary, Serbia, Turkey, and Ukraine are part of the program, and a few others. But as teachers introduce themselves, they can tell you a little bit about where they come from. And that is probably all I have to say. We are very, very appreciative of District Six's willingness to host our teachers and our schools. I know that from, we have been, at UNC, we have been very lucky to have been hosting international programs since 2008. And so we know we now have a very long history. We have long-term relationships in terms of our local teachers and the teachers who have come from other countries. We also have very long-term relationships with our families and some of the teachers. In fact, teachers have come back to Greeley and stay with their host families. So we do know that these kinds of programs actually do make an impact in people's life in terms of really building strong relationships and understanding. So the other way to look at the TEA program is not only a professional development program, but it's also a diplomacy program, because we learn from other countries, and people from our community also learn about other countries. The teachers also become friends and create relationships with local community members. So that's, I think, all I have to say about the program. I have brought Tamara, and I have brought Nikar Fuz, her name is always, Ulya and Nina, for you to ask more questions, and they can tell you all the exciting things that they have been doing.
So maybe, would each of you just be willing to just give, introduce yourself and tell us where you're from and give a little bit of background about how long you've been teaching, and then a little bit of the highlights of being here in District Six? How does that sound?
Hi, everyone. Thank you for hosting us here. My name is Ulya. I'm from Azerbaijan. I'm a science teacher. I've been teaching for seven years, and last year I had experience teaching in China. So now I'm here, and I've been co-teaching with a teacher from Medicine STEM Academy. It was a nice experience. We learned from each other. There was a lot of things, so I'm going to write a little post. So we have a lot of projects, and one of our projects to share our experience here. I will share this experience in my own language, so teachers can actually see what kind of things they can implement in their classrooms and so on. So it was a pleasant experience. We had a lot of cultural activities where we saw differences and things we can take home. And also, there was a lot of events where we had our cultural exhibitions, so we shared what we had there. So it was a nice exchange of time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your board members and everyone, hello, and thank you very much for the opportunity to host us here today. It's really feels special. My name is Nina Zonova, and I'm a teacher from a small town named Kubrat in Bulgaria. I have been teaching English for 28 years, quite a long time. And I really worked hard to be here now, so it's very special to me. And I'm co-teaching with a very young and promising teacher, A.J. Nelson. I just want to say his name and mention him, highlight him, at Greeley-Central. So we co-teach together, and what I wanted to see, actually, here when I come here and learn, is project-based learning and co-teaching. Because we talk a lot about project-based learning in Bulgaria, but we are not very experienced in that. And some experience from firsthand would be great. So I'm grateful to A.J. because he is very creative. And his classes are completely project-based learning, so I learn a lot. And we share worksheets and everything, so I can take and share with my colleagues when I go back home. And what I also saw is that his classes and his students are really calm and very respectful. So I visited the senior classes and 10 graders, and they're really respectful. The atmosphere is quite friendly, and they all work, so we, I think it's a very creative environment and encourages creativity and critical thinking in students. Thank you.
I forgot to mention that most of the teachers are English teachers, except that we have two social studies teachers and one science teacher.
Okay, my name is Tamara. Thank you for having us here today, and I hope that we will give some input that is valuable. I've been teaching English in Serbia for 14 years, and I have experience in teaching all ages. This is why I was so curious to come here and see how it's done. I'm grateful to have the opportunity to work with IB teachers from Greeley-West, because I started working in the IB program in Serbia three years ago. But the IB is kind of like a newborn in Serbia. So here, I get to talk to more experienced teachers and coordinators and see how they organize the lessons and how they approach the IB diploma and the exam. Because I'm sure you know, this is a little bit tricky for the educators. And I work with Ms. Elizabeth Becker Dent in Greeley-West, and I am so appreciative of their willingness to share everything and just share their experience and knowledge and advice with us. And she even adjusted her lessons to our media literacy course, so I was able to see how high school teachers implement media literacy. In every lesson, basically, it's not a subject on its own, but it's a skill that is taught throughout the classes on a daily basis, which is very valuable. And also, I would like to point out that the schools that we've visited have so many resources, and it's just like a Disney World for teachers. When you walk around, then you're like, wow, they have everything. And I think this is really good for motivation of students, because when they come to school in buildings like this that have equipment like that, and even the aesthetics of the school, it's so motivating for students. They don't want to fail because they appreciate what they have been given. So I think this is important, as maybe you are the part that maybe decides on these things. So, yeah, you're doing a good job.
Hello, everyone. I am Mirafuz Kamarova. Hello, everyone. I am Mirafuz Kamarova. I am from Tajikistan. I've been teaching English as a foreign language at school for about 10 years now. I am doing my field study at Greeley-Central High School. It's been really interesting to observe the classes and to see how teachers implement and use technologies on a daily basis in day classes. Back home, we don't have that opportunities, because here, students can use laptops and then smartboards. But, and then it's really interesting to observe, like, how helpful is that? And the thing that I want to point out, it's really good seeing all those kids who have different abilities in one school. I think it's a really good thing to do, and it motivates people to be in one place. Thank you.
Well, we'll open it up for board members to ask some questions, but I normally have a board, but...
Natalie, raise your hand.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Mash.
I just wanted to say thank you so much for coming and sharing individually. You know, just gives us a lot more understanding of the program. And I think it's also really beneficial to us to hear from an outside perspective, you know, what your experience is with our students and with our buildings. So I really appreciate that feedback, and especially glad to know that the students were respectful and they were engaged. And I mean, of course, that is our goal in even sometimes more of a challenge in the secondary level. So I was really happy to hear that, and I just hope you, it sounds like you've gotten to see, you know, the beautiful mountains, and I hope you've enjoyed our city. And I need to go and look at a map so that I know where you are all from, because I have a general knowledge of the area. But, yeah, what a wonderful, I was curious. So is this kind of like professional development for you when you go back? Will you be mid-semester and kind of pick up where you left off, or are you kind of taking the semester off? That's a couple of questions all mixed together. Did you just take this semester of school off back home? Or when you get back, will you finish up, you know, before a break or something like that?
It depends on the country.
It depends. I'm sure, yeah.
Different countries have different rules. But most of us are immediately going to go back to teaching and implement everything.
Okay.
Our classes are covered by our colleagues.
Okay.
And we are on a paid leave.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, me, for example, I'm on a paid leave because we have our national program. Right after COVID, you know, was introduced right after COVID, because a lot of teachers were absent for a longer period of time. And that's why they allocated, you know, a bit more money in case someone is absent, so that colleagues can cover their classes and get paid. So, yeah, my classes in particular in Bulgaria are covered by my colleagues. So, of course, we are in constant communication, you know, sometimes at night. But, yeah, it's okay, and, yeah, so when we go back, we just continue where they stopped.
Well, thank you for coming.
I think my condition is a little bit different. I took a break since I'm doing my PhD, and I was like in China for last year. So I'll come back, finish my PhD, which is also something I took from here. Like, I'm doing a project-based learning approach in biology classes, and we have like, most of our classes are talking about project-based learning. And I have like things that I took from like classes as resources. We have access to libraries, so I can get like books from library. Probably I will go back and like spend a lot of time to finish it, and then I will start to implement.
Sounds good. Best wishes with your PhD. A lot of work, I know. So I was curious, I heard a couple of things already of kind of nuggets you got from here that you're going to take back and implement, things like project-based learning and co-teaching. But I was curious if there were other positive things you learned that you would love to implement back in your home countries? And also, things that maybe you think we could benefit from that you do in your home countries that we aren't doing in our public education?
Well, back home, our classes are 40 minutes long. That's first, you know. So here, classes are longer, like 90, I even heard that they are 100 minutes long. So we cannot do that much in 40 minutes, but that's why our classes are more teacher-centered. Yeah, so the teacher, most of the time, he explains, he gives input, a lot of input, and we expect students to do the rest at home, as homework. But of course, we have some intensive English classes in eighth grade, where they have like four or five classes of English like per day, where we can do this project-based learning. So maybe what I, well, after discussing with my co-teacher, A.J., well, he said that he should probably try to give more input to his students in the beginning, because they are, they feel more relaxed. Not that this is, you know, that big of a problem, because the students already know, they are used to this project-based learning, and they know what is expected from them. But also, another thing that I like it very much, it is very simple, but it's very important, that A.J., for example, or also the other teachers, because I also had the opportunity to visit other teachers. In the beginning of every lesson, they just write down on the whiteboard the goals and the objectives. And this is something we don't do. And I think it's a very good idea that I can also take home. Yeah, and I also taught some Cyrillic alphabet to, yeah, to the students. And now, yeah, I think they know the alphabet. They can read like simple words. And also, they have to learn a poem by heart, by a Bulgarian poet. So I hope that, I will see tomorrow when I go back. But I know it's difficult, yeah, so I also gave the English version. If they struggle with Bulgarian, they can, you know, either learn it in English. So, yeah, we exchanged some worksheets. I also sent A.J. some of my worksheet and lesson plans just to discuss like common topics, especially related to media literacy, because he uses, the students use their Chromebooks all the time, and that is another thing I like in these classes. We also have this opportunity to use, we have enough like laptops and tablets in our schools, so we can do part of, not the whole lessons that he does, but part of them, because he is also very, I also observed this station work of students. They were divided into five groups and moved stations, and that was an excellent example of implementing other subjects in English. So it was geography, maths, literature, so they combined all this knowledge, which is also a very good idea, you know. And I think when I go back home, I can do it, I can co-teach, like, for example, with a geography teacher or history teacher, and try to do just part of it, maybe this station, taking turn in stations.
Thank you.
I can say, in my case, I can say about differentiation that happened in the classroom that I've been. It was amazing to observe how they, they had like different levels of language speakers, and they had like one teacher, she was actually in charge of several subjects. That was a surprising thing for me, but I saw the background, how she's planning with other teachers, and every teacher had their own role. And I saw like there is a consistency between classes. They have three classes, and they're doing consistent job. And also, they split the class, and they have differentiation. So like they teach class, and then they have like half of the class when students can run to their need class. And for example, if they have writing skill problem, they can go and develop that skill. If they have reading skill problem, they can go and develop that one. I think that was amazing to observe, and to take away for me. Something that I think we were together with another teacher from Ukraine, something we actually input to the classroom. I think we were like helping teachers to manage a little bit more. We had, like, she's also more experienced. She had 12-year of a teacher from Ukraine. And we were observing and seeing, you know, the background kids, they can like, can be managed a little bit different. And then we went to teach her, and we were a little bit afraid at the beginning. We're like, oh, sorry, do you mind if we say that? But I have to say, school teachers, they're so open, school administration as well. They invited me to the data analysis meeting. So it was like really nice time to, they're open to share, they're open to get a feedback. When you say something, they listen, and they just like, they think about it, they come back to you. There was a case, we had a discussion, she was like, oh, my God, you said that. Like, we're doing this lining and using ruler. It's strict in our country. And I was like, are you guys not using ruler? And then I went back, like next week when I came, she was like, oh, thank you. You said about the ruler, and that works really well. They start to take it serious. I was like, wow, so there's like exchange going on, and it's really nice to both sides, I feel.
I observed something really interesting in Greeley-West. For me, it was a new concept. They call it tutorials. I don't know if other schools do it, but it's kind of peer teaching, additional lessons for students who are struggling in a certain area. But actually, they don't get tutors or teachers who are assigned to them, but they help out each other, and they work in groups. And one teacher is in charge of like 30 students. But it's strange, because my English teacher is in charge of the math tutorials, because she shouldn't interfere, and only the students should help out each other. I know, I guess they think the English teachers aren't that good at math. You know, we can't interfere even if we wanted to, because it's kind of advanced. But I asked her like, what, the students should present their problem, the math problem they are struggling with, and then they are divided into groups, they know their groups, it works really well. And then other students who are maybe in the same teacher's class or different math class, they help them out. So the student who is struggling stands in front of the board and tries to do the problem, and then the other students navigate them. and then the other students navigate them. And it's really an interesting concept because normally all students need tutoring for some areas, but they don't want to do it after school or they don't have money or they don't have who to help them with. But this is integrated in the lesson schedule, so they can't escape it. The other thing is that they need to be accepted to this group. So if they are absent or they are not taking it seriously, they get dropped from it. So it's a privilege to be there. And I think it's a really, really good thing for students who want to go to college and they don't have the opportunity to get tutorials or extra work. And this whole idea of peer teaching, because that's how you learn best, by teaching others. So the other students can also reintegrate, or how to say that, their own knowledge. And I asked, what happens when they are stuck? Because, you know, there is certainly some math problem that no one can solve. And they say like, then if all the students from all the other groups cannot help them, then we go to another classroom and ask a student who is advanced at math if he would be willing to step out of class and help them out. And if everything fails, then they invite one math teacher to help them out. That's one thing. And the other thing I would like to point out is the school sports. We went, as Madeline mentioned, to many high school and also university football games, but it's not about the football, you know, you get to see how the whole community revolves around the school sport. In my country, maybe just the girlfriends of the players would come to watch or wanna-be girlfriends. But, you know, here it's a family event, it's the event for the whole community. And I think it's really important to, you know, keep the community close knit. And it's an event that bonds them and they have their own emblems, like everyone is like Wolverines or Spartans, Bulldogs. So it's very important for their identity and sense of belonging. And I'm surprised how professionally these games are organized. And it's just school sport. I was thinking in the movies, they were overdoing it. It's just in the movies, but it's not. It's exactly the same as in the movies. So I really like this. I would like if we could have it in Serbia.
I also have very positive memories. I was an exchange student 11 years ago in South Dakota. Yeah, I've been in high school and I actually graduated from high school here. So it was really good to be back at school, but as a teacher now. And then these years passed and then you can see that what changed. But I know that different states have the different kind of approaches. But I think that pretty much everything, kind of the same, teachers are really helpful and they're really respectful. But they do a lot of effort to teach kids even if they are not really listening to them, you know, and they're really patient that I can point out, like back home, we're not that patient, you know. Maybe it's some kind of cultural thing, but they do a lot for them. But the thing is, I noticed most of them like use their cell phones in the classes. It helped us a lot, like I think some four years ago or five years ago, actually in my country, there is now a law that restricts using cell phones at schools, so they don't use it at all. And we get more attention and then more focus and it really helps. So I don't know like how that kind of can work here, but I think the teachers would be more happy with it. Because it takes a lot of, yeah, time like to see and kind of observe class and then each time ask students like, can you put your phone down, please, you know? It's one thing that I can tell, I've learned a lot, but I think that it might help teachers.
Mr. Bellin, do you have a question?
Yeah, I did. I wanted to see, good or bad, what the biggest difference you can think of real quick between your home country and the US schools?
For me, it's technologies. Yeah, because, yeah, pen and papers are also technology as our, the house teacher mentioned. But now our kids, they don't, they're not different anymore. They use the same social media, they watch the same movies and YouTube and everything. But here, I think that kind of education is kind of for these kids because it's way ahead of time. But back home, we kind of struggle getting their attention, not class, but our classes only 40, 45 minutes. And I think that our kids really bored with our classes. I think that is really good thing that I can take back home and then kind of point out and speak out, so maybe they will do something with it. Thank you.
Good or bad?
Good or bad.
Okay, so I don't, the first thing that pops in my mind is the different, the visual difference. And what she mentioned is the technology and everything that is available for students. Maybe they take it for granted, maybe not, because maybe they haven't seen other types of schools. Or sometimes students in Greeley West tell me, you know, our old building used to rain on us or something like that. So they are more appreciative of the new building. But my dilemma is kind of like, my students don't have anything. Like our classrooms are literally white walls and then individual desks and then I use a marker and write on it and I need to book in advance if I want to use the smart board or something. And then there's a conflict in schedule, so I just give up. And if I need to give a PowerPoint presentation, I need to pray to gods of all religions that, you know, technology will not fail on that particular day. And you know how it works. So I see all this is running very smoothly, you know, in my school, but I'm just wondering personally and professionally, you know, how they say that difficult times create resourcefulness? And then I'm wondering, because this is, everything is so smooth, like do these students really have a need to be resourceful? I don't know, you know what I mean? They should be aware of how much they have. And I'm not saying my students are getting a worse education, but maybe a different experience of education. For them, education is still, you know, prison and when is it ringing, what time do I get off? And I feel here, schools are working very hard on creating a cozy, homey environment inside the school with the holidays, with the decorations, with everything. But just my dilemma is, long-term, will the students expect it in real life too? Because it's not always like that. But of course, it's always a benefit to have more than to have less. So that's the biggest difference that I noticed. I think if you walked in Serbian school corridor, you would think like, am I in the 1950s? But we will catch up, I'm sure.
You did a good job of being very PC with that. You dealt good with your delivery there.
Okay, that wasn't my intention.
Yeah, that was good, thank you.
Okay, I would love to share my experience in a west Greeley school. It was a high school, so I asked one of the teachers to have like an experience for one day when we had a chance. Thanks to Ms. Jennifer, we had like a lesson observation for biology classes. It was really interesting for me to see like students engage while they're not tested for this course, if they're in a high school, because that's different back home, because you cannot like motivate students for the subject if that's not elective subject and if they're not getting tested. I was like, why they're so motivated? That's the question. And then she was like, they're just enjoying. I feel like it's because the class is designed a little bit different, maybe that's the reason, or maybe they have interest in a science here more. I still think about this reason, so I'll figure that out hopefully. Another thing was that the school is actually not just academic-based, but they have like other things besides the academic approach. They can cook, they can build, they can design. And that's a serious classroom where they are like putting their full effort to do it, which is quite different. We have a heavily academic approach in our schools. And if you want to go to music school, you have to actually go to another school to do that, that's another building. So not everyone can do that. It's of course pretty of charge, but here I saw like bands and it was really interesting to see like they have theater club when they're doing better job, according to my colleagues, than like the actual theater. So they're selling tickets, they're cooking for that event, they're hosting, so they're like building a community, as Tamara said, around, and that's really amazing to observe. And that's something we can actually implement in our hometowns.
If we get to theater.
Back home, I have some great students and I miss them very much, very much right now. So they are the same age as the students I co-teach with AJ here in Greeley Central, so they are the seniors. And one thing that is very different is that our students are not that independent, so the teacher must always be like, always give input or always be there for them, always explain, always like it is a constant teacher, you know, support and feedback also. While here, the students are more independent and they can work on their own, they know what to do, they don't need constant instructions. Another thing that my students like possess is that they are very ambitious, very competitive, because this is how it goes in our country. You must be competitive and you must work hard in order to reach your goals. And not that, I don't know, you know, in six weeks, it's impossible to know all of them, but the atmosphere in the classroom, the environment is like calm and relaxed. And students do not compete that much. I don't know if this is good or bad, of course, I'm not saying it like that, I'm just mentioning it as a difference. So maybe we are planning to, you know, to continue to match our classes, to make them, you know, send postcards or something. We are planning a project together. So I really hope that they can learn from each other. And another thing that is, you know, very different is that in, back in our schools, you know, students can come and hug you and it's okay. You know, we have lots of this hugging and kissing and it's okay. Well, here it is not allowed at all, so it was, you know, hard for me not to rush the students, so I tried to, you know, obey the rules here. So this is, but this is okay. I mean, this is, I think it's cultural. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions from board members?
Not a question, but I'm just so appreciative that you're all here tonight, sharing your experiences with us and that you're here in our schools and giving that opportunity to our students. I had the experience of listening to, and I don't remember her name, from Hungary?
Rita.
Yes, and I realized as she was explaining the history, some history, how little I know. I mean, and that's kind of embarrassing, but it's just, it's just a great experience for our students to hear from you all and learn from you all. So thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. May I? Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask one more question than you?
Yeah, absolutely.
I was just curious, are do, is there a Fulbright program where US teachers go?
Yes, absolutely. So we have representative from IREDS, actually, we have representative from the State Department and the IREDS. And we went out to different schools and we gave the principals information on how our teachers can actually apply for the different Fulbright exchange programs. And being that they have already hosted a Fulbright fellow, they get a few extra points. So that will be, and then also we share with the principals, Fulbright has a principal program for two weeks where they visit either Finland or Singapore. And that also would be a great opportunity for administrators to do. So yeah, we have share information with them.
Are you staying with families here? So you have a host family that takes you around?
No, actually, we are staying at UNC.
Yeah, okay.
And then families are just for being friends and taking us out or, I asked them, they told us, you should give your wish list to your family, let's put it that way, some of the American things that you would like to do. So we went bowling, we went to a football match, we went to the movies, you know, all the cliches. But it was fun, I really enjoyed it. And then we can travel outside of Greeley or just, we made Serbian dinner for them, for them to try the Serbian food. We try to get together at least once a week and it's been really great. Actually, my host family is a teacher who was on a Fulbright exchange, American teacher. So he used to teach at Ames College. And then it's really, professionally and personally, really fulfilling to spend time with them. That's how it works.
Thank you. Are your students pre-identified to come to your schools or are you serving all the children in your community? So you know how our schools are public school, everybody comes and we serve everybody. Are your schools just preparing students for university or are they kids that are going to go into all different kinds of fields?
The second.
The second, yeah.
The second.
So a similar experience to what you're having here?
We also basically how they accept kids to schools, they divide into, maybe it's not districts, but one town is divided into several maybe streets. And then the kids from that street go to the school and then they find out how it goes.
Thank you. In my country, we don't have homeschooling. So this is here, I learned that there are a lot of students who do homeschooling and we don't have it in this way. I mean, we have students who prepare for exams, but they come to take them at school and they are allowed tutoring from teachers also.
Maybe the difference is that, for example, in my country, and I think in some of yours, high schools work differently in the way that we have an entrance exam and you need to decide when you finish elementary school, but elementary school is eight years, so you're around 15, when you decide your high school. So if you choose a kind of general high school, you can go to university after that. But if you choose a vocational one, you choose to learn how to be a chef or bus driver or something like that, after that, it's very difficult to get into university. But once you are in the general high school, you don't have as many elective subjects as here. For example, my students have like 14, 15 mandatory subjects. And then elective ones are kind of more like for creativity, for something as a hobby, but it's not for college credit, as they would call it. So that's the biggest difference. But anybody who passes the entrance exam can be accepted into high school and it's free for everyone.
What percentage of kids go to general high school and what go to career and technical schools?
Well, I think a higher percentage goes to general high school. Because there are different levels of difficulty. Some are known as being more strict or something like that, they have a reputation, so they can choose. But to vocational high school, vocational high schools are chosen only by those students who are absolutely certain that there is no way they will ever want to go to college. So they just want to work when they are 18 and then they choose vocational. Or they, unfortunately, sometimes they don't have a choice. So they choose to go to vocational school so that they will start earning money sooner. That's the reason why. Otherwise, normally they would choose general high school. Is it the same here?
No.
Not the same, but...
No.
No, we have everything at the high schools, so you're just...
Yeah, we saw in Greeley West, what she said, like they have welding, cooking, different tracks, different modules, how to say it, and also the general ones.
And one of you mentioned exams and motivating students without exams. What are the exams that you have that are motivational that we don't have?
I think that was me. Like I was in a classroom, biology classroom where it wasn't like AP class, no honor class, like no exam at the end of the course. And that was my first question to a teacher. I can see like all the students are working, interested and like they're asking questions, they're super engaged. That's a little bit different because when you go to high school, you already have your direction. Sometimes it's not biology and then the biology is not priority for you because we have heavy academic side, I guess, like it's really, really heavy sometimes, like teachers cannot even survive it. So they're just like pointing their whole power to the side of, let's say, history. And then biology is not important for them. So during the classes of biology, you can see them doing something like, you know, on the side. And that wasn't the case here. So I was like, what's the motivation of a student? I can see a student super interested. And the teacher said, probably because later they're going to decide. But it wasn't like elective class, it was like compulsory class for all the students, no exam base, nothing, and quite... And quite an important topic, like, heavy topic, respiration. It's not an easy topic to, you know, be engaged in. And they were like all interested, doing their best job. You know, that was something interesting for me. Why?
Yeah.
In my country, we have, when they graduated from high school, we have a big department of Minister of Education, which is like centralized testing. Basically, our kids study for that.
Yeah.
And they got like five clusters. So one would be law, and then the second would be, I don't know, architecture, and then medicine. So basically, what they do, they just take series all those subjects that they are required for that. And then when they graduated from high school, and then they take this exam according their cluster, like, what would be their specialty, and what school they are going, university, that is, I think, the best motivation for them to study.
And it's, for every school is the same in country.
And they take that test at the end of high school?
Yeah.
Okay.
One more. You mentioned there was an entrance exam to get into high school.
Yes, imagine that.
Yeah.
No, this is really stressful for them when they are 15 years old, you know? It's actually not an entrance exam that is organized by a high school, that's just how we call it in Jargon, but it's actually a Matura exam for elementary school. So you need to show that you have obtained the knowledge that is necessary to, you know, graduate elementary school. So based on that score, you are ranked, and according to your rank, some high schools are accessible to you, and some, unfortunately, are not, because you are ranked with other students. And they do like a list of their priority schools. And of course, the person that has the highest score will get their first priority on the list, but someone won't. And then, this is how they get into high school. And in high school, they need to collect or gather enough good grades, so that they can have sufficient score to even apply for entrance exam for university. Because each university has their own independence, or, let's say, they decide on what kind of students they need. So they don't choose them only based on the high school grades, because sometimes those grades are not objective, because the teachers give you the final grade. And sometimes the students with lower grades actually come from better schools, because it's more difficult to get a good grade. So it's ironic. And that's why there are entrance exams for each university. And for example, if it's University of Medicine, you need biology, chemistry, mathematics, everything. And if it's English, you need just English. So, but you need to be really fluent at it. And it depends. So they can choose, and I think this is a good thing, because they get a good general knowledge. So then, by the time that they are 18, they were already like bombarded, as Uliya says, with a lot of information, academic information, and they know what they are good at and what they are not good at. So they can choose their university and prepare for the entrance exam. So in that way, I think it's a good system compared to what I've been told here, is that sometimes students choose all their subjects, and then by the time they reach the age for university, they realize they need some more credits from other subjects that they didn't take, so they need to do extra work when they are 16, 17, 18, to make up for that. But of course, you know, there is time for everything when you are young. So yeah, that's maybe an interesting difference.
In my country, we have numbers to assess our students, from two to six. So two is poor, and you don't pass if you have them. Three is fair, four is good, five is very good, and six is excellent. So this is what is there, you know, ranking, let's say, that they must have these numbers compared to the numbers that are, you know, determined by their score, they can enter. You know, we have four exams after fourth grade, finishing primary school, just to check their literacy in Bulgarian and maths, mathematics. And then in seventh languages, like in Serbia, just to enter the high school, again, Bulgarian language and maths. After tenth grade, another set of Bulgarian and maths exams, but they're just, you know, to check their literacy there. And some can leave our school and go for the last, for the final two years, they can change schools, but they can also stay, but it does not, you know, depend on those score. They are just for statistics. And after the 12th grade, they have Matura exams. First is always, so Bulgarian language is mandatory, and then they choose the second Matura exams, which can be English, any language, the language they learn, or mathematics, or history, or geography, or biology, depending on their interests and their strength. And they can use these, their score and these numbers to enter high schools. But not every high school can accept students on this. Some still must take exams, like medical universities. They still require, you must take an exam, biology and chemistry, and it's often very difficult to enter a medical university in my school, in my country.
It sounds like the trajectory for what you're going to do, your vocation is set maybe at an earlier age. Is that fair to say? Or am I misunderstanding?
Might be. But sometimes students from, for example, if they want to be a nurse when they are 14, they decide they will go to medical vocational school. They can change their mind when they are 18, but they need to make up for what they haven't studied. And then it's more difficult for them to have the final exam after high school and to pass the entrance exam for university. But then, on the other hand, they had a little bit easier time during high school. So it doesn't mean that, you know, all doors are shut if you make a decision, but it's just maybe a more windy road or something like that. That's why I said earlier that the majority of students who are not sure, they just go to general high school. And after general high school, you can go to any university, basically. So that's good. And you are prepared for any university.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I think one of the biggest challenges right now for our Ministry of Education is to make vocational schools more accepted by community, because we still have the stereotype thinking that if you go to vocational school, you're not good in the academic. As I said, like, it's really heavy academic. Schools are basically teaching you a lot of knowledge, and you have like less chance to apply something. So, and when you get a chance to go to vocational school, there is a feeling in a community that, oh, you didn't get a good knowledge, you know, you're not good with that. So we're still like trying to break that stereotype. I know they're doing a lot of like backside work to change this understanding and give a chance for those vocational schools, but they have a low rate.
Enrollment.
Yeah.
It's the same.
That's something sad.
Any other questions, guys?
I was trying not to have one more, but I do have one more, because you were in China last year, and so I'm just curious, what did you feel Chinese schools are doing that is successful and is leading to more student achievement?
It was American school. It was AP program and honors program, but like, with the Chinese culture, it's really hard to have American school purely, because students, they have heavy carriage of their culture. And I didn't feel that it was American school, honestly, because I used to teach in British school and American school at home. And then when I went there, it was quite different. They have, by difference, it's so different in terms of culture. It was a lot of cultural shocks as a teacher, because they have different understanding of teacher. They have different, how to say, like, approach to the teacher, and the expectations are really high from a teacher. They demand only teacher-centered learning. It was a really hard challenge to move them from teacher-centered to student-centered learning, even like try to do that, because it was a really different challenge for them. They're super smart. They are really, really smart in terms of the math and statistic and all that stuff, which was really good and beneficial for me compared to the home country. And they're really, really good with the knowledge. They can comprehend good. But because they do comprehend well, they expect you to teach heavily, a lot than is given in a curriculum. So they have high expectations. That was something that I didn't know before I traveled there.
Guys, I think we could probably keep asking you questions for another hour. Thank you so much for being here. We do appreciate you being here tonight, but also in our school system.
I just want to say how appreciative I am of making sure that our district's schools are open to our Fulbright fellows. We could not have this program if it were not, if it were not for the access that we have to our schools. And I want to say the teachers are, the district's teachers have been wonderful in opening up their doors, and collaborating, and being excited about being in the program. So I have never had a rejection from anybody, anyone that I have approached, and everyone is really, really excited to be part of the program. So that's really great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our next agenda item. Again, thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate you guys working in our district.
It's a pleasure.
Next on agenda, we have our legislative update.
Thank you.
You're good to take it away.
Thank you, President Matthews, Board Directors, Dr. Pilch. I'm here to give you just a short update on some legislative items. So for the first, I just wanted to update the board on the delegate assembly. At the last meeting, we hadn't received the final resolutions. We have since received the final resolutions from CASB. And so I provided for you the numbers of the resolutions that were not moved forward by the delegate assembly. There were two proposals that were withdrawn. That was number 13, the universal screeners for reading and math, and number 17, which was the waiver of the social studies assessment. Unfortunately, I can't give you any reasons as to why this was withdrawn, and I also can't give you any reasons as to why these other resolutions failed at the delegate assembly. But just, my assumption is that there were some other reasons for why these school districts who had proposed those resolutions withdrew them ultimately. But for the ones that failed, number 23, minimum wage for Colorado teachers, just as a reminder, that was to create a minimum for, for a wage for Colorado teachers in the state of Colorado, which was at $40,000, and I believe it was actually recommended to be at $50,000. That failed. The Public School Land Trust Sustainability, number 25, failed. The Support for Economic Freedom in Impartial Classrooms failed. Just so you are aware, that was the proposal that was to reject the Colorado Education Association's position on capitalism, and it was to garner some distance from CEA, to have CASB and CEA kind of identified as separate entities that do not support the same issues. That ultimately failed. And then unfortunately, number 35, guardrails for artificial intelligence use in educational environments, failed, which I have a personal vested interest in wanting legislation that creates some guardrails for AI use. But unfortunately, that resolution failed. Just so you're aware, these are just resolutions. These are the types of areas of law that CASB wishes to move forward and to seek lawmakers and relevant stakeholders in terms of passing and adopting legislation. And in this case, that doesn't necessarily mean that any of the resolutions that failed or were withdrawn won't end up becoming legislation later down the road. It just means that CASB might not necessarily be the one supporting that legislation, if that makes sense.
We can get some more information about them if we want to when we're at the CASB conference in December. There's a delegate assembly at that time as well, so our delegate can attend, and anyone can attend, and can report back.
I might be interested in attending that with you, so. As far as other legislation, these are just a few pieces that we had talked about, and I just got a little bit more information. So staffing needs, this was to address the shortage of hard-to-fill positions. As you know, in this school district, in many school districts throughout Colorado, we are having to contract with staffing agencies to fill those hard-to-fill positions. We are working with many staffing agencies. There's not just one that provides all of these staff members. We have to end up contracting with many staffing agencies, and they come from all over the United States. One company, I believe, is from California. I'm not sure if I can rattle off the top of my head where all these other companies are located. But of course, they all have their own standards and requirements and desires when it comes to contracting, which can be a little bit convoluted if any issues come up. And so ideally, we won't need that if there's a fix in legislation that addresses staffing shortages. So the proposal is that there would be a means by which current licensed teachers could obtain special education licensure in a more streamlined way. So the proposal is that they would be endorsed if there's a passage of the Praxis exam and successful completion of district-approved special education induction program. So there'd be, you'd have to pass a Praxis exam, and then the school districts would kind of create their own induction program. It could be a year, it could be two years. Maybe there's more specificity that is identified in the law about what that program must include. But just know that simply passing the Praxis exam isn't enough, that it would require some additional work for any folks who want to obtain that special education licensure. And so, you know, anything addressing things like quality and content, having staff who are enrolled in these induction programs work directly with students, again, for a year to two years. And then, of course, we'd have to look internally at available resources within our district to see what kind of program we could actually realistically move forward. But that seems like at least a step in the right direction. Obviously, there will be a lot more stakeholders involved if this legislation were to be introduced. And certainly, there will be some guardrails put up in terms of what kind of induction program is appropriate. So I don't know if anybody had any questions on that piece. The next piece of legislation I want to talk about that's being proposed is some enhancements to the threat assessment process. So there is some desire to have a more data-driven process in terms of threat assessments. As you all know, with the Claire Davis Act, there is a limited waiver of sovereign immunity for any school district that fails to reasonably protect students and staff from known violent perpetrators. As part of identifying individuals who could be potentially violent perpetrators is that you go through a threat assessment. The threat assessment is rather subjective. There are some holes, and not to say that there's any issues in this district specifically with its threat assessment process, but I think some improvements could be made to make it more data-driven. And so the proposal right now is essentially to do some research, to have the legislature set aside some money for a team to collect and identify potential indicators or variables that could be associated with the risk of violent student behavior. So they'll just go out and research nationwide what types of indicators could be associated with potential risk of violent student behavior. So, you know, there wouldn't be any legislation that would come from such a study. It would just give us some information, and then perhaps in years moving forward, we could look to legislation. I don't know if anybody had any questions about that. Okay, then the last, again, if the board has any priorities about any specific changes to the law that they've been eyeing, or if you've been hearing anything, I will be meeting with our lobbyists this week to talk about a couple of areas of law that I, you know, believe that we should be looking at, but if the board has any other areas that they want to have me forward to our lobbyists, please let me know.
Where are we on the funding formula with the legislature? I mean, do we still have that committee, the subcommittee, or ad hoc committee, whatever it was?
Megan, do you want to join us also on this? So there is still the School Finance Act task force. I don't think they've made much headway, but Megan was able to sit in on the last debrief of that, that I was not able to be a part of, so I'm going to let her take it.
Yeah, so I think the general consensus is that we've had so many different task forces trying to recreate or come up with a fix to the funding formula, that one more task force is probably not going to be able to accomplish this task in the course of eight meetings, which is, I think, all they have allowed in statute. So I think people are looking for alternatives to how can we fix this. And so I think the latest idea that is generating some traction is to go back to what the superintendent's proposed. is to go back to what the superintendents proposed.
2017.
2017. And kind of recreate that, look at current numbers, look at current information from districts, and see what that might look like. So I believe that the Colorado School Finance Project is going to kind of take the lead in modeling what that would look like for some different, you know, the factors in the formula. So that's the plan right now, to see if we can at least get the K-12 groups, school districts specifically, on board with kind of, this is the solution that we would like to present to lawmakers and let them consider that. I don't know that it'll happen in one year. It will probably continue to take time.
What's complex about the 2017 plan is that many, if not most, of those superintendents have turned over since 2017. And so there's a very small group of us who were superintendents at the time, at least in the Front Range and the Denver area, which is where, you know, most of the students were served in Colorado, was in the Front Range. So we're working. I'm a part of a task force also with superintendents to just see if we can vet that plan that was proposed in 2017 and get energy around it. But many, many large school district superintendents have turned over, if not most, since we worked on that plan. And it was hard to get there in 2017. There was, you know, people had to give up some things to get there. But it at least began to look at some possible solutions to funding.
The other complicating factor, in my opinion, is we have this attempt to rework the financial funding formula, but then we have an adequacy study happening after that.
Right.
And many of us feel like that's kind of the cart before the horse. We need to have an adequacy study done first so that we know what does it really take to educate students to the standards that we have established.
So Megan, I want you to describe that again. What does an adequacy study mean? You just started to go there, but I think that's important to understand what that means and why it's ridiculous that it's coming after the task force instead of beforehand.
So there are different ways that they can do an adequacy study. I think that they have landed on using a combination of these methodologies. But, for example, one method would be a professional judgment panel. And so we would hire, or the state would hire, a facilitator that would then go in and talk to school districts and talk to teachers and figure out what does it take for teachers in their classroom to meet the standards that they have been asked to meet. And that can mean everything from curriculum to the number of students in a classroom, to administrative support. I mean, the list goes on and on.
Support staff, actual numbers of physical classrooms, the technology in the classroom. So it's kind of a baseline of, okay, to do adequate education, this is what we would expect, that everybody would have at least this baseline.
Right. And then beyond that, you have your baseline, but then for your kind of identified student groups, so special education students, for example, what does it take on top of that baseline, then, for them to achieve to that level? English language learners, gifted and talented, you know, all of those different student groups, takes different levels of resources. And so trying to figure out what that baseline is and then how those factors layer on top of that to ultimately have a successful funding formula.
I remember one of the problems with the funding formula before was the need for money, that the formula needed additional funds. And I'm wondering, is that still true? But maybe not because the budget stabilization factor has gone down for the last few years? Or how close would we be?
I suspect that is definitely still the case. I can't remember exactly, but I believe that if the budget stabilization factor is paid off, that really only gets us back to funding levels of, like, 1999, I think.
I think you're right.
And so, you know, what has happened these 20-plus years? So the time value of money has definitely changed. And I think that we will still find, after all of these studies, that we are very behind in how we fund education.
And it still keeps Colorado in the lower bracket of funding nationwide, even with that in there.
Those are all the questions I had. Any other questions?
Was there also a task force looking at the accountability system, like CMAS testing and things like that?
There is, there is a group looking at that. We have not heard much feedback from them on their progress. But there is a group, and I actually feel a little more confident in that group in that there's actually superintendents who are very experienced superintendents who are a part of that group. Whereas with the School Finance Task Force has really only one or two superintendents on it from pretty remote areas. So, but we, there's a lot of work still to do around the Accountability Task Force. I mean, like this, there's different prongs of work that have to occur. And so we're watching it, you know, and I would think probably by the time we get to CASB, there will be some information that we can glean at CASB about where they are with both of these groups. I'll go back and just say one more thing about School Finance that I was sharing last week that I think is interesting is that what's happened in Colorado is so much onus has been put on the local voters to fund public education because the state has not funded us. So almost every district in Colorado has to have mill levy overrides and bond issues when it's time to do deferred maintenance or time to build additional buildings. Whereas in some other states, you don't, you don't, you only have to go to the voters if you're in a growing district where you've got to add buildings and you need to add staff. But to do your, you know, to maintain, you don't have to go to your local voters in some states because they're funding at a much more adequate level. And so that, you know, it's really disproportionate in Colorado that there's so much put on the local voter, particularly the personal property taxpayer, in order to fund public education. And, you know, Brenda Donas spoke last week at Rotary, and as she said, there is only one, you know, one district in Weld County that does not have a mill levy override, and it's a very oil and gas-rich school district. And so there could come a time they have to go for a mill levy override to be able to fund their programs and their education.
Any other questions?
I think, Sam, I'm just curious. You said you had some concerns on some things that we should be discussing, what laws are we looking at? Are you willing to share those?
You said you were going to talk to lobbyists about a couple of years ago.
Oh, yeah, so my, yeah. So I think, you know, I would like to talk about the staffing issue and what's been raised by CASB and just kind of get some feelers out there for what the conversations, at least, that she might be seeing. There is legislation around accessibility that we have been talking about, website accessibility, that I would like to discuss with Ann Barkus. I will say that these areas are pretty much, well, I don't want to use the word universal, but I think that many school districts are probably also pursuing legislation on these topics.
AI. And how far are they going to try to go with AI?
And then the last one would be Senate Bill 296. That's the Student Discipline Bill that needs some changes in terms of how they have defined discrimination and to align it back with the federal definition because they've kind of created a confusing standard that we need to follow that isn't in line with the federal definition at this point. And again, that's another area that I know that some other school districts are looking at. So again, if there's anything more specific to this district, you know, please let me know. And my meeting on, I think it's Wednesday, isn't the last meeting. So of course, if anything else comes up...
It's actually the first of many.
It's just the first of many, many meetings. So if anything comes up that you're hearing about or you want to touch on, just please let me know.
So since the guardrails one failed, do we have anything within our district of looking out for the AI currently?
Yeah, you may recall that we did that AI presentation with the board about a month ago? Yeah, three or four meetings ago. So that laid out for you kind of the guardrails of where we are in terms of practice and procedure. We've not yet adopted additional policy, but that may come as well.
And I was just looking, I know that there were some changes to the acceptable use policy, at least as it pertains to, in this district, at least as it pertains to kind of solely relying on alternative intelligence to do your work. You know, that's certainly something that's not permissible in this district to do. But we'll continue to look, have an eye towards policy development in this district, even if there isn't any legislation.
There's nothing else? We'll dismiss you, Mr. Fall. Thank you. And sponsor?
Thanks. Thanks. Thank you.
We're now debriefing the work session. And so Dr. Campus, it's, we'll start with you.
So just thought it was super cool to hear about this UNC Fulbright program that's been around since 2008, for so long. And yeah, how cool for teachers to learn from each other and take best practices. Our teachers benefiting from these other teachers and the foreign teachers benefiting from ours. And then thank you again for the legislative update, Nate.
Yeah, same. Thanks for getting those teachers in here. It was really fascinating and eye-opening to kind of hear the differences and their point of views and the likenesses and differences. And, I mean, the excitement they shared also to teach was evident, you know. That was just, that was really awesome for me. And then, as always, Nate, always bringing all the details and keeping us up to date. So thank you, guys, for everything.
Ms. Mash?
Yeah, I agree that we could have continued asking them questions for another hour. Like, I want to go and see schools in other areas of the world. That would be really fascinating. And again, another amazing partnership we have with UNC. Sorry you had to go after them, Mr. Fall, but it was a slightly less engaging topic for me. But no, thank you very much. It's really important for us to be up to date on what is going to potentially affect us.
Ms. Solomon?
My apologies for making it here late. We had something going down at work at the end, and I wasn't able to get out on time. But wow, I think I really missed a big chunk of the good part of this meeting. So I would like maybe to tug on a couple of your ears to hear what I missed. Mr. Fall, thank you again for keeping us in alignment and always keeping us in check and informed as to what the changes are.
Ms. Pappas?
I can't believe all these years we've recognized the scholars, but we've never really had the opportunity to sit and visit with them, so... I'm learning. I know, it's great. I mean, nobody really thought about it, so it was great. It was an awesome opportunity, so thank you for that. And of course, Nate, as well. And then I just want to let you all know that when we teach, a strategy for teaching English language learners is a scaffolding approach. And so, you know, you give a lot of support, and then you decrease that support. So I'm just going to let you know that I'm going to gradually release from making any motions. So at the board meeting, I will not be making any more motions, so it's up to you all. I am releasing.
It's not that I won't, it's just I never get a chance because you're like...
No, I have count. No, I count. Wait time. Wait time is eight seconds typically, yes.
Yeah, thank you for bringing the Fulbright scholars in. And also thank you for the update, Mr. Fall and the sponsor. I appreciate it. And we've got about, just about 30 minutes, so we'll...
What about Natalie? If Natalie has anything?
Oh, Natalie, I'm sorry.
It's Natalie.
Yeah, thought this was Natalie.
No.
No, I just think the Fulbright teachers that came in just kind of put it in my student perspective, that I'm very grateful for all the benefits and things that I, as a District 6 student, have. When they were talking about my Chromebook, I was like trying to hide it and like, I don't know what you're talking about. But I am very grateful for everything that goes on in the behind-the-scenes. And it's just, I will be telling my friends about it tomorrow, so. It's very, it's very cool. I have a teacher, a professor, she is from a different country. And so we're learning some of our cultural stuff, so it's pretty interesting what's going on, so.
What coursework is that in?
Environmental science.
Thank you, Natalie. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned, and we'll be back for a business meeting at 6 o'clock.